Welcome to our second session on the Letter to the Romans. I thought we had quite a lively discussion last time, and it's only going to get better as we move on, I hope. So if you need notes, there are notes for those who don't have the notes with them. We're going to be picking it up again at verse 16 and 17 as a point of review. Chapter one, verses 16 and 17. Because as I stated the last time, verses 16 and 17 are in fact the heart of this letter, not part of the gospel itself. So, somebody's making a lot of noise in there. I'm gonna... Can you mute yourself so that...
I think that was me, Rabbi.
Background noise. Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's review for verses 1, 16, and 17 again. Sure, let's pray. That's a good idea. So Lord our God, we just bless you and thank you for your Torah, for your word, for the word to us, and the good news of the Messiah, Yeshua, and his faithfulness. So Lord, as we study these very difficult words of Paul, help us to understand with clarity and with conviction, so that we can not only know them, but do them. We pray now. B'shem Yeshua. Amen. Okay, so in verses 16 and 17 again, it reads, "For I am not ashamed of the gospel, for it is the power of God for salvation to everyone who believes, to the Jew first and also to the Greek; for in it the righteousness of God is revealed from faith to faith, as it is written, but the righteous man shall live by faith." Quotation from Habakkuk. So we broke down what we were talking about in that verse 17. For in it the righteousness of God, we have to understand what the righteousness of God, for in it the gospel, the righteousness of God is revealed. So what does that mean? So Paul helps us to understand a little bit of this in that he quotes from Habakkuk, chapter two, okay? So if we were to look at Habakkuk, chapter two, it reads, "Be emunato, sadik, be emunato yeh." That's what it says in Hebrew. So if we were breaking that, that in his faithfulness, he will live. That would be a more literal translation, in his faithfulness, in his steadfastness, he will live. So if Paul's helping us to understand the meaning of what he means by God's righteousness by saying, by quoting from Habakkuk, then righteousness and faithfulness are equated. So what we're talking about is the faithfulness of God in fulfilling his promises. This is the good news. The good news, which Paul said earlier in his message, in verse, uh, let's see, he says, verse two, he said, "I'm talking about the gospel which God promised beforehand through his prophets in the holy scriptures," meaning there's nothing new. Everything was already written in the Hebrew scriptures and promised there. And now God, verse 17, is faithfully executing those promises, fulfilling those promises to Abraham, to the Jewish people, to the creation itself in fact. This is all about that. And he says, "For in it the righteousness," and in the gospel story, the righteousness, the faithfulness, the loving kindness of God is revealed from faith, from his faithful action to our faithful response. From faith to faith, faithfulness to faithfulness. But there's that word pistis, and translators have had a heck of a time translating that word ever since they first encountered it. Okay? But as it is written, "the righteous man shall live by faith." And if we look at that and understand the Hebrew there, the word emuna, not patah, or something like that, which is more trust, but emuna, which is faithfulness, then we know what Paul is driving at. You see?
I don't understand when you say faithfulness and faith. Can you make that section again?
Sure. So again, faithfulness is active. It means I'm doing something in order to demonstrate that I trust. Faith can often be more passive. In other words, I believe in something. And so this is the way people have very often interpreted these words, that we just put our faith in Yeshua. You know, we believe in Jesus, and then we get to go to heaven, or whatever it is we think happens, you know, in the afterlife. When in fact, Paul is talking about actionable faith. He's talking about God's active participation in the redemption of his creation. He's being faithful to fulfill the promises. He said, despite what we're going to discover in chapters two and the end of chapter one, two, three, despite the fact that human beings don't deserve it at all. Right? God is faithful, though every man is unfaithful. And now what's happening in the gospel is, it's from faith to faith, in other words, from God's faithfulness to fulfill his promises, to our faithful response. This is the other half of the good news. The other half of the good news is, we gotta respond. If we don't...
I'm sorry, but isn't faith the beginning of the salvation process?
No. It's the ongoing product of the process.
Well, why would someone continue in the process, or even start the process, if they don't have faith?
Well, again, see, there's another word that we have to do, we have to understand, or another way of understanding, which is that the first act of faith is putting one's trust in, but that's not the end of it.
Well, why would one put their trust if they don't have faith or believe?
Well, what are you expecting faith to... I mean, you seem to have some concept of what faith is that...
I mean, I thought it was, but based on, you know, your translation.
Well, tell me what you think, somebody, what is faith? Is it the intellectual ascent?
It is actionable, but it starts with you receiving a belief, believing in something.
Okay.
I'm not saying that it doesn't include an actionable response, but it starts first with me saying that I believe, and I receive something from God.
Okay.
From a shit, I receive something, I believe in that, and because I believe in it, I'm going to do something. That's my permission.
Okay, so let's take the example of Abraham, all right? Because Abraham will be used as an example again and again and again in this thing. So Abraham, you know, he's living in Haran, wherever it is he's living, and God comes to him somehow in a vision and some dream, whatever, however it worked out, and says to him, "I want you to leave the land you're living in, and your family and everything, and I'm going to take you to another place." It says Abraham believed God, and it was counted to him for righteousness. So he believed. In other words, God said something to him. He said, "Okay." So when we're confronted with the reality of Yeshua, you, me, anybody, when we're confronted with that reality, we have a choice to make at that moment. I believe that Jesus was who he said he was. That's the first thing. Then the rest of it is my faithful response to that reality, to that. Look, 2 billion people say they're Christians in the world today, believing in Jesus. How many of them are faithful in that? Even remotely faithful?
Frank talks about faith, how it works.
Yeah. So that's the whole point. When confronted with the choice, we make a choice, but then that choice leads to what's being spoken of here, faithfulness, you know, from faith to faith. As it is written, "The man who is the righteous man, sadik, be emunato," in his faithfulness, in his faithfulness, be hayah, you know, or yeh, excuse me, will live.
Abraham's faith came because he heard the word God, he responded to it.
And he responded. See, he could have heard it.
Faith comes by hearing, hearing by listening. That has to be the first step in the whole...
Of course. It's not just going to come out of the blue. You have to...
Abraham responded, but he didn't receive the promise when he responded.
Well, the promise is, yeah, he believed, though. He believed in it was counted unto him for righteousness.
But his action was...
But his belief was, you know about Abraham, I know about Abraham, because he went. Otherwise, we'd have never heard of him. He would have been just some guy living in Haran, yeah, I believe in this God. Yeah, so what?
I didn't have any evidence.
Rabbi, can I explain my take on it?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Ed.
I look at it from the point of view of believing and trusting. And the example I use is airborne army. I believe that my parachute is going to open, so I load on the C-130 aircraft with 50 other soldiers, and I believe that my parachute and all of the parachutes are going to open. Now, when I walk up to the door, I trust my life, when I step out of the door of the aircraft, that that parachute is going to open for me. There's a huge difference between believing the parachute is going to open, and trusting that parachute is going to open, and stepping out of the aircraft. There's a huge difference.
Correct. And I would use that, that's a good analogy. Because what's going to happen, what we're going to see here later on, when Paul talks about the issues of justification, we're going to get into all these issues of justification in later chapters. We're going to first discover what he means by justification, and what that means for the individual who is justified, or will be justified. It's not simply a one-off, one-time thing that God does and splashes you with the proper amount of bleach, and you're clean. It's an ongoing work, because we're being faithful to the covenant that God has placed us in by virtue of Yeshua's faithfulness. And we'll get there. It's this whole complex of things that we have to understand. Okay? All right. So what's important here, recognize the faithfulness of God in the face of human unfaithfulness. This is the first thing that's going to be, that Paul is describing, that God's faithfulness is not contingent on the faithfulness of human beings. Okay? God is a promise keeper, no matter what. And while sin is a big problem and hinders the process, it cannot prevent the process from its eventual fulfillment. It hinders things in particular ways. We'll talk about that. Okay.
I want to stop Habakkuk reference 2:4.
2:4. So God's act of faithfulness to Yeshua is that God, and he alone, initiated the work necessary to allow for ongoing covenantal relationship between himself and the world. Okay, this is a very important concept. We're going to be talking a lot about covenant. Because God makes covenant. God is a covenant maker. And, but covenant is relationship. It's not just contract. And so understanding how those covenants work, and what our part in the covenant is, will be another very important part of understanding Paul's arguments in Rome, in the Letter to the Romans. Okay. So by the way, I have this understanding of things, that God makes a covenant in the world through Messiah, Yeshua's faithfulness, that exists apart from anybody else participating in it. God did it anyway. I'll tell you what, and to demonstrate this, I quote from Romans 5, I'm jumping ahead a little bit here, where it says, and this is in your notes, "You see, just at the right time, when we were still powerless," well, it might not be in, if you have the notes from last week, they're in there. If you don't have last week's notes, I don't know. "You see, just at the right time, when we were still powerless, Messiah died for the ungodly. Very rarely will anyone die for a righteous man, though for a good man, someone might possibly dare to die. But God demonstrates his own love for us, his own faithfulness, if you will, that while we were still sinners, Messiah died for us. He did it before we, while we were his enemies." So it wasn't like there was this pre-existing, you know, set of circumstances, other than the promises that God had made to Abraham. So it wasn't like we were already there, and God decided, "Okay, you people, you're so worthy, I'm going to die, I'm going to send my son for your sake." Wasn't like that. Okay. So now I want to talk about the nature of covenant before we move on. So I suggest covenant is best understood as an arrangement initiated by God in which he makes certain promises to men, and expects certain things from men in return. It's simple. Is that reasonable? I mean, some people think, "Oh, there are these unconditional things." Well, every covenant is conditional in this sense, that if we are going to receive the blessings of that covenant relationship, there are things we need to do. We may still be in covenant, and this goes to the, now I can speak to some of the questions that were raised in the email during the week. But I said last week, you know, it says in the Talmud, "All Israel has a place in the world to come." There was some confusion here, because, you know, like, that was my opinion, that all, every Jew is saved, they don't need anything from God. No, that's not what I meant. I'm telling you what Talmud has to say, but I will say this much, okay? And that is, that all Israel is in covenant with God. And now through Messiah, Yeshua, the whole world is in covenant with God. But whether we receive the blessings of that covenant relationship is another story. That's contingent on my response. Am I going to be faithful? God says, for instance, in Torah, "If you do these things, I'm going to bless you in the fields, I'm going to bless you, your enemies are going to run from you, you will have, you'll be fruitful, you'll have all you ever need. But on the other hand, if you don't do it, then you won't. Then you won't, then you'll run from your enemies, and I'm not going to make it rain, and you know, blah, 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 you know, and all these other things." So is Israel in a covenant? Well, you see, the negative part of that covenant is as much as the positive part of the covenant. When we go up to Mount Hora, you know, the two mountains, forget about, I've forgotten the names, you know, and they go, and they say blessings and curses. The blessings and the curses are part of the covenant. Okay? Both of those things are in the covenant, covenant relationship. The blessings for obedience, and curses for disobedience. Okay? So we have to understand that there's, every covenant is like that, that God ever made. Covenant he made with Adam and Eve, you know, the covenant he made with Noah, the covenant he made with Israel, and the covenant he made with David, the covenant he made with, through Yeshua, all of them. Nothing is unconditional. You know, you can't, I mean, because I'll find a condition in every one of those covenants. You know? So, so we have to understand that this is what's happening. So, so again, if we examine the covenant God made with Abraham, God made promises first to Abraham, next to Abraham's family, and finally to all mankind, right? There are three provisos in the covenant. But the blessing of all these promises are contingent on Abraham's faithfulness to God. If Abraham decided, "Listen, I'm not doing that," none of this would have happened, would have been able to happen. God would have had to come up with plan B, I guess. Okay? But he does. And the whole plan, at least with Abraham, falls apart if he doesn't go where God shows him. In fact, you'll recall that the plan began to unravel a little bit. When Abraham fails to stay in the land during famine, and instead goes to Egypt. Remember that? He decides to go to Egypt for some reason, you know, all right, so there's a famine in the land. And, you know, it's an interesting thing. Every time there's a famine in the land, the people decide they're leaving, it doesn't work out really well. If they stay, God will make provision for them. If they're faithful. You know, we shouldn't be worried about famines. When God, all we need to do is drop to our knees and pray to the Lord, and let him take care of whatever famine we think is happening. When we decide that we can't rely on God, because he didn't make a provision for us, that's when we're on our own. So you see what happens, right? Abraham fails to stay in the land. What happened? Does anybody remember the story? What happens? Okay, so these guys, you know, they think his wife is beautiful, they're going to take her for the king. It really makes a mess. And then almost brings a curse down on the people, and blah, 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 until God has to rescue them. God comes up with a rescue, right? You know, sends a pestilence throughout, into the household of the king, or whatever he does, in order to, you know, get his attention.
I was kind of looking at that, like, even, because it was not clear God made a covenant of Abraham, that he would bless those that blessed him, and curse those that cursed him. So I was thinking, it's almost like he's giving him an illustration that even though the king was unaware, he received the curse because he took the evil's life.
Yeah. Well, that is true. That is also true. See, because God makes, because that's God's promise, part of the promise. He could have said, "Well, Abraham, you didn't trust me, I'm going to just let you blow, and let all the conditions of the covenant blow away." But he doesn't do that. He says, "Well, I'll bless those who bless you, and curse those who curse you." You know?
Is covenant and promise interchangeable? I know you mentioned Noah and David, and it's the same word.
Yeah, yeah. All right, God makes a covenant. It's an arrangement with somebody, contained within the covenant or promises. Okay? Usually more than one. So, so anyway, so God fixes that, you know, so God does that, plan goes on. And we find throughout the life of Abraham, that it is his obedience to the covenant that results in his blessings and the opportunity for faithfulness on the part of others, for his descendants, and so on. As the ultimate act of obedience, Abraham, in compliance with God's commands, offers up Isaac, his son. As a result, God rewards his faithfulness. Right? God says to him, "The angel of the Lord called to Abraham from heaven a second time, and said, 'I swear by myself,' declares the Lord, 'that because you've done this and not withheld your son, your only son, I will surely bless you and make your descendants as numerous as the stars in the sky and the sands of the seashore. Your descendants will take possession of the cities of their enemies, and through your offspring, all the nations on the earth will be blessed, because you have obeyed me, because you have obeyed me.'" Not because I said it, and I got to let, I got to make it happen, whether you do or not. But because you have obeyed me. So let's understand the nature of covenant. That covenant means that there are blessings, there are always going to be blessings and curses, benefits and things that are not so beneficial. Right? Because here's the thing. In the traditional understanding of justification throughout Christian history, it's almost like a once and for all get out of jail free card. You believe God, you believe in Yeshua, you get a get out of jail free card, and you're free for, that's it. And you get this imputed righteousness, because Yeshua, he's so righteous, he has this pool of righteousness that you can just, it just overflows to you no matter what. And that's, that's not it. That is not it. And believe me, I've been listening all week to commentators on the Book, on the Letter to the Romans, and half of them are saying exactly that. You know, "Jesus does this, and you get it, and you know, and you're good." I'm like, really? You know, I mean, how does that work?
It doesn't have to be either/or though. It doesn't have to be that or option two, like, it's imputed. Yeshua's righteousness is imputed to me by faith. That's what makes me a daughter of Abraham. But because of that, it doesn't mean...
Well, when we get there, we're going to go into the whole computed righteousness, right? We got, I don't want to get ahead in the Letter too far, because if we do, we're going to have to be going back and forth, and, you know, it'll take forever. And everybody agrees, no matter, you put no timeframes on studying the Letter to the Romans, because it's too complicated. It's too difficult. It's amazing how many people agree, all these commentators agreeing, "Man, this thing is very difficult to understand." So any insights we can get into it will be ahead of the game. Which is why I didn't want to do it in the first place, remember? Okay?
We're doing it.
Do that to Abraham's faithfulness. God establishes covenant with Abraham and his descendants after him. The covenant exists regardless of the descendants. Have you ever wondered about that? I mean, listen, let's face it. You know, when we read the stories of Exodus, for instance, almost from the moment that the people left Egypt, they wanted to go back. They complained about water, they complained about food, they complained about the dry conditions, you know, whatever. Whatever they could complain about, they've complained about all the way through. It was like Moses was actually having to force them, you know, to, you know, to continue on the journey. And yet God, in his faithfulness, continued to press forward with them. Because the covenant exists apart from their faithfulness of the people involved. Now, you know, ever think about why God chose a family instead of a, you know, ideological group? Why couldn't Abraham just be a prophet? And go around like Buddha, or one of these other guys? And whoever became a disciple, that would be God's people. That would have been one way to do it, and almost every other religion is like, in fact, every other religion is like that. Every single other religion is like that. Only Judaism is not. Only Judaism has this familial component. Why did God choose a family and not this ideological group?
Yeah, relationships with us, and that's why family is like that.
Well, I'll give it to you, I'll quote to you, you know, I'm sort of paraphrasing this quote, but from Michael Visegrad, who's a Jewish theologian of the 20th century, who examines this question in The Body of Faith, that's the name of his book. And he said, "Because in it, God affirms humanity in the fullness of its humanity, not just in its intellect or ideology, but that he affirms all of the fullness of humanity in there." That's why he chose a family. And it doesn't matter whether you Jews believe or not. It doesn't matter. Because they're in covenant with God, regardless of whether they believe or not. Now, whether they're going to receive all the blessings of that covenant is going to be a function of their willingness to participate fully. You know, it's like marriage, right? You marry somebody, you're married, but that marriage could be a good thing, or it could be a horrible thing. It depends. Right? You're still married, unless of course, you know, something, you know, you get divorced, I mean, but if you don't, you're married. So in the same way, Israel is married to God. And, I'm jumping around with these screens. Okay. All right. So, okay, so let's continue. So now, so the covenant exists regardless of the descendants due to Abraham's faithfulness and God's faithfulness in the covenant. The blessings of that relationship, however, are contingent on the obedience of subsequent generations. And there is nothing that the children of Israel can do to undo the covenant, but their obedience will determine the extent to which they are blessed. And that's what Torah teaches from beginning to end. And that's the story of the Hebrew scriptures, when the children of Israel obedient, and they have good kings and all that other stuff, great things happen. And when they don't, terrible things happen. Right?
You're explaining it.
Well, again, see, we're talking about justification. Justification would have been, "Okay, all Israel has a place in the..." okay, if all Israel has a place in the world to come and they're all gonna be blessed, do God listen to what they do? No. No, no. When I say all Israel has a place in the world to come, do not believe, I do not believe that every Jew is going to wind up in Olam Habbah. There will be those who don't deserve it, believe me.
There's a distinction between ethnic Israel and believing Israel?
No, 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 no. See, another thing we have to get away from, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to really change your perspective on something. We have this view of, of the examination of salvation on, on an individualistic level. Don't get away from that. Paul is talking about more bigger things than the salvation of any individual. And this, and this, this letter does not address to, to, it's not, it's not that it doesn't address, but it really does not emphasize the salvation of individual souls. This is talking globally. He's talking globally, and that's the way we need to be thinking about these things. Let's understand the global situation before we understand what happens with individuals. So when it says all Israel has a place, you know, thus all Israel will be saved in chapter 11, doesn't mean every single individual Israelite who ever lived. That's not what it means. Okay? Because there are those whose, look, it's one thing to, to it's one thing to for God to, you know, you exist inside the covenant. But the world to come is not promised to every single soul, it's just not. Right? Even in Yeshua's time, Yeshua said, there'll be many who say, you know, you prophesied in my name, you did all these great things in my name, well, get away from me, I never knew you.
From a salvation standpoint, what is the contention? I understand that all of Israel is included in, all of Israel is included in the covenant.
Yeah.
What gives the individual, not the group, salvation?
Well, listen, you know, you don't want that to be dependent on me. You know, you don't want me to make, be the judge. Well, the best I can do then is just direct you to something like, you know, Romans 10, where it says, "If you believe in your heart, God will raise them from the dead," you know, and, you know, go up to, you know, nine to 10. You know, Paul seems to be saying there, if this, if you embrace this reality, if you embrace this reality, then, you know, that's the best I can do. You know? So. Okay. Now. Having said all of this about covenant, we move to, starkly, in, in, in chapter one, to this description of the condition of the world. Beginning in verse 18. And why is it then that God has the right to even say these things? Okay? So it says, "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men who suppress the truth in unrighteousness. Because that which is known about God is evident within them, for God made it evident to them. For since the creation of the world, his invisible attributes, his eternal power and divine nature have been clearly seen being understood through what has been made, so that they are without excuse. For even though they knew God, they did not honor him as God or give thanks, but they became futile in their speculations, their foolish hearts were darkened. Professing to be wise, they became fools, and exchanged the glory of the incorruptible God for an image in the form of corruptible man and of birds and four-footed animals and crawling creatures." So according to Paul, God's anger is revealed against the society who has suppressed the truth. And what truth is it that they suppress? It's the truth about the one true God, the Creator. And, you know, and it's a lie that we are not subject to this one God. So think about it. When God brings Israel to Sinai and speaks to, you know, this is chapter 20 of the, of the Book of Exodus, and Moses is standing there. And God says, "Ani, Anochiado nai." "I am the Lord your God, I am God." And what's the first commandment? The one who brought you out of Egypt, by the way. What's the first commandment? "You will have no other gods before me." Right? And then he goes on to say, "You will not make images," and so on. Okay? So what happens? Humanity breaks the first, in fact, Israel, you know, you know, almost has like a preamble to it all. That's the first thing they do. That's the first commandment they break. Right? And humanity has broken that rule ever, ever since the creation. I mean, think about Adam and Eve for a minute. So the serpent comes, speaks to Eve, and what does she say when she looks at the fruit? Or what does he say to them? "Oh, if you eat this fruit," what?
You'll be my God.
Yeah, you'll be God. You'll be like God. So we don't need him. Because if you're, if you're like him, what do you need him for? And humanity has built a system of things, of a world which is precisely built on that idea that we don't need God, we can make our own. We can be gods. And I think about the Roman god, this is, this is all habits in the Greek and Roman world, right? All the gods of Rome and Greece are just like humans, they're just with superpowers. That's all. They have, they have some superpower of some kind. But they're just, they're just human beings with a superpower. So they have, so they have the same morality issues, lust issues, power issues, anger issues, all the kinds of mishegoss that human beings are, but at an elevated level. All they did was they elevated, you know, human characteristics to, to, to godlike things. And corrupted, and in doing so have to deny the true Creator. And that's the system that we built. Wouldn't you argue, wouldn't you argue that this is what we got? This is what we have right now, is a system built on, not on godly principles, but on, on precisely the opposite of that. That, you know, we're, we're about power, you know, one commentator described it this way, power, money, sex. Those are the three things. And if you think about the gods of the Greeks, power, money, sex, that's what they were about. Oh, no, but religious system, well, the religious system is built, that they built supports those three pillars, are supported by those three pillars. Okay, but that's what it's all about. Zeus, or whoever, Jupiter, whatever, power. You know, Pluto, you know, Plutarch, whatever his name was. I don't remember. I don't know all these gods. I only know that what human beings do is they, is they create images. And those idealized images, and they strive for those idealized images, and we built an entire system around this. This is what he, what he says. He says, "Since the creation," and the problem is, is that God is evident in the creation. The only way out is to look around. And God built innately into, into humans, the reality of God. I'm gonna, I'm gonna share with you something I found interesting this weekend. "For even though they knew God, they did not honor him as God or give thanks. They became futile in their speculations, and their foolish hearts were darkened. Professing to be wise, they became fools, and exchanged the glory of the incorruptible God for an image in the form of corruptible man, like the Greek gods, for instance, and of birds and four-footed animals and crawling creatures, and they had gods of all these types." So God has every right to be angry and, and to be, and to, and to be prepared to judge mankind. Okay? Now, here's an interesting article I found here. Saw it in the newspaper the other day, so I thought, gee, that sounds like what's going on. So it says, the title is "The Uncertain Future of Particle Physics." And without getting, you know, I'm not, you know, I barely pass math, so I, you know, I'm not the guy to talk about. Here's what, here's what the gist of this article is about. It's, how many of you know about the CERN Super Collider? There's this, this machine that exists, you know, where they, they make protons, I don't know, or atoms, spin around really fast and crash into each other in order to determine the make, the, the composition of things, you know, tiny particles and all this other stuff. Okay? So this, this thing cost, it cost, what was the cost? It cost $5 billion to, to build and cost $1 billion annually to operate. Okay, so this thing has been going on, I don't know how many years, at least, it's collected data since 2008. So 10 years. $5 billion plus $10 billion, 15, you know, so $15 billion. And the only thing that's ever produced was this boson particle thing. They came up with this, they were able to detect this boson particle. Nothing else has happened. In, in all this time, all this, nothing else has happened. Okay, so this person who is a physicist herself, you know, is just talking about why do we need to build, and now they want to build another one. The point is, is they want to build another one. Because the CERN Super Collider has to be shut down for a while, you know, to upgrade some of its equipment. And so now they're saying, well, what we do need is we need to build another one so we can spin atoms around and, you know, continue to find absolutely nothing. Okay? So. Let's see. So anyway, I just thought this was very interesting because this is what I'm talking about in terms of what people, what science does. In other words, what they're trying to do here is to understand the makeup of the universe. Okay? When the universe, there, there is a place where we cannot go because that belongs to God. There's another article I could show you that is actually in your notes for the second class about dark matter. And that dark matter makes up 95%, dark matter and dark energy make up 95% of all that is, but they don't know what it is. They've never been able to detect it directly. They only think that they can detect it because it has gravitational effects on bodies that are nearby. Okay? But in other words, 90, but there's a theory that if there isn't enough mass in the universe, the universe is gonna just compress on itself and become one big fat black hole. Okay? But it's this mass, this dark mass that they cannot detect, which holds the universe together. Okay? Because they don't even know why you don't fly apart right now. Or why I don't fly apart, and why anything stays together. Well, see, this is the point. The point is, is that when you deny God, you have to come up with your own answers. So science is, you know, listen, I love science. Science has done a lot of really great things, but science also goes beyond itself in an effort to explain away God. This is why, you know, we can have what was his name, Stephen Hawking, coming up with a theory of everything which does not require a God, doesn't require God. You know, his equations don't need him, we don't need him. Well, tell me what happened one second before the big bang, if you believe in that. Okay? And all of this, I say, in the eliminating of God in the, in being the Creator. We create a system of our own, which is utterly and completely corrupt. A social, economic, cultural, religious system. That's what we live in. This reality that we have built, which, which actually competes for the title of God in our lives. And most people are pursuing gods created by this system, rather than the one true God. This is a reality of life, and that's why, and why we, you know, we have the values that we have and why we're constantly, you know, having all these difficulties in the, in the world. When we have a world, you know, God created a world which was fully sufficient to support his creation. And yet, most people in the world are doing without. Why? Because somewhere along the line, in our corrupted view of the world, or maybe our corrupted view of God, we believe that we live in a world of limited good. And it's a zero, and life is a zero-sum game. And therefore I must hoard as much of it as I can, because if I don't have, if I don't have, if you have it, then I don't have it. You know, we were just discussing, what did you tell me, 24 people? No, 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 not that apartment. That, I don't get, that's silly. You would tell, there's like 24 families that have like 30% of the wealth of the world. And then if you put the first 100, 150 richest families together, they probably have 2/3 of the wealth of the world. And then all the other billions upon billions of people are, do not have it. Because why do they have to have all of that? They can't even use it. But it does give them power. Okay? But it does take away from all the rest of humanity. You see, there's enough that the whole world can be satisfied and have plenty. But not when people hoard it away. Not when a few, few smart people manage to take it from everybody else and keep it.
I think the source of that is there's no value for human life at all.
Very little value.
There's no value for the glory and the image of God in people. We can kill a gestational nine-month-old child in its mother's womb.
Yeah.
And it's
Well, that's where that comes from. It's, that's, that's where it comes from. It comes from the fact that we don't, have no value for life. So, so what, what we have to do is change people's attitude, right? This is the only way we're ever gonna get rid of it. Yeah, change the law. They'll just break the law. The world's full of lawbreakers. Okay? So it goes on to say, in verse 28 and following, says, "And just as they did not see fit to acknowledge God any longer, God gave them over to a depraved mind, to do those things which are not proper. Being filled with all unrighteousness, wickedness, greed, evil, full of envy, murder, strife, deceit, malice, their gossips, slanderers, haters of God, insolent, arrogant, boastful, inventors of evil, disobedient to parents, without understanding, untrustworthy, unloving, unmerciful. And although they did not, they, they know the ordinance of God, that those who practice such things are worthy of death, they not only do the same, but they give hearty approval to those who practice them." Okay? I'm missing a couple of verses here. And so I want to get to those verses because they're very important. For some reason I didn't print them. Let's look. Okay, yes, I missed some verses. I printed them on a sheet. I want to go back to verse 26. We had read through 25 before I read this last part. And in verse 26, it says, "For this reason God gave them over to degrading their passions, for their women exchanged the natural function for that which is unnatural. And in the same way also men abandoned the natural function of the woman and burned in their desire toward one another, men with men committing indecent acts and receiving in their own person the due penalty of their error." Okay, so all of these things are corruptions of the image of God in humanity. If we accept these corruptions, then we, then what we're doing is creating the system that we have created, and we have, listen, you know? It's, it's a serious problem. Let's, and I want, and I want to address the issue of, like, homosexuality head on. So, because I know it's, you know, in our world, it's, you know, we, we want to be nice to everybody and we want to be, you know, we want to be good to everyone. So let me give you my feeling about it. My feeling about it is this. No matter how we feel, No matter how we feel, we have, we still have choices for obedience or disobedience. I'm not gonna argue with anybody about whether gay people are born that way or whether they become that way. I don't care. Uh, you know, I'm sure that scientists can make arguments in both directions, psychologists and people themselves and whatever. And I have a lot of experience with this, believe me. It's a question of obedience. It's just a question of what does God say is acceptable and what's not acceptable. Okay, the issue here is not love. The issue is acts. Okay? They gave themselves up to degrading passions for their women exchanged the natural function of that, for that which is unnatural. Same way men abandoned that natural function for the woman and burned their desire toward one another. This is, this has to do with sexual acts and love. Uh, sexual acts and lust. Excuse me. Doesn't say anything about who you can love. Anybody can love whoever they want to love. I don't care. It's what you can do with them that you, that, that is, that God is, uh, is making a case about. Okay? So just as I would say to a young couple, a heterosexual couple, when I'm married, don't have sex. Can't do it. Until you, when you're married, you can have sex. I know it's old fashioned, but you know what? It's the way God, it's God's, it's obeying God. And either we're gonna do that or we're not, or we're not gonna do it. You know, it's simple. It's the same thing I would say, and I've said it to gay, gay people, you know. Listen, you can have, I don't care who you love. It's who you can have sex with. Who you can perform these sort of acts with. So if you can manage that, I don't care, you know, live together. You know, have a life. But I'm not, but, but I'm not going to, but I can't condone that other stuff. Because that's what God says you can't do. You see? And so we have to, yeah.
There was somebody on the 700 Club who was homosexual, and he came out of it because he got a word from God telling him that it was wrong. He went and threw it all out, and he changed his life. He doesn't, he's not involved in that activity anymore.
Well, for him, you know, however we respond to it, I'm just trying to help everybody understand what I think the scripture is saying about the issue. Okay? Now, because, hey, listen, what if you're a married person and you, you know, you, you want to run around? You think that's okay? That's not okay. All right, so there are lots of things that we can't do in that realm uh, that are just as bad. I also want to, uh, point out one other thing, and that is the way in which we privilege sexual sin. That we, we consider this to be real wickedness and, and, uh, you know, it's such a wicked thing that, you know, it really requires people to have to, you know, go to therapy or whatever. Okay? Well, I want you to read with me again verse 28 and following. "And just as they did not see fit to acknowledge God any longer," that's everybody above, not just those who are doing the stuff. "God gave them over to depraved mind to do those things which are not proper." Let's see what those things are. "Filled with all unrighteousness, wickedness, greed, evil, full of envy, murder, strife, deceit, malice, their gossips, slanderers, haters of God, insolent, arrogant, boastful, inventors of evil, disobedient to parents, without understanding, untrustworthy, unloving, unmerciful." You see, Paul is grouping those sins in together with those other ones. They're just as bad. You know, we, we're all guilty of this stuff no matter what. All of us at one moment or another in our lives have been guilty of some of this junk. Can we all agree on that?
Yes.
And Paul groups it all together. Let's not privilege one kind of sin over another. This is another one of our problems. Can't do that.
That's also used though, as, as an excuse to keep doing whatever people are doing. You know, don't judge my sin because it's different than yours. So that's also just, just so you know, they put a spin on that.
Yeah, well, everybody puts a spin on everything.
You lied so I can have homosexual issues.
Oh, no, no, no.
Or commit adultery, whatever.
No, no, both, both are wrong, but, but the point is both are wrong.
Right, right.
And, and, and we don't need to be privileging one kind of a sin over another, because we surely, you know, are much more forgiving of some of these things than we are of that, right? Okay, we don't disassociate with people because of these, but we'll disassociate with people because of that. And listen, it's all under condemnation. But, and yet, so, so, you know, here's the deal. You know, when, when we do, uh, during Amkippur, we pray prayers like Vidui and Achet, you know, and we go through this whole list of sins. We recite these whole lists of every sin you can almost, almost imagine, right? You know why we do that? Because at least one time, one of them things is gonna apply to you. You know? Very, very likely not just one. But the fact is that there will be, you know, they apply. And all of them need to be covered. See, here's what's, God is condemning the world. This is, by the way, this is the Roman world of, of his time. You know, he's describing the world out of which these Roman people have come. Now, of course, maybe they have a little further to go, but certainly this is the world out of which they are emerging. Because this is, this is a world that does not believe in the, in the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. The first thing they did was they denied God, right? They created, and they created images of other gods. So this is not describing Israel necessarily. It is, but it is describing the world of that time and the value system of that time. And believe me, the value system of ancient Rome was horrific. They'd leave their babies out if they thought that their babies were, uh, they did post, post-birth abortion. You know, if the baby was imperfect, just leave it out there and let the wolves eat it. Uh, things like that. Uh, you know, they, you know, these were horrible people. I just, just saw, uh, you know, a documentary about, um, Caesar's conquest of Gaul. And he conquers the people and he's got them on the run, and they, and the people come to him and say, we want to make a deal, you know, like we, we, we want to make a truce, peace, you know, blah, blah, blah. He orders 150,000 people executed. No, just kill, no, just kill the whole tribe, you know, we'll just do genocide. It's fine. This way there won't be trouble anymore. I mean, this was, you know, and he's hailed as a hero for this, for doing this. I mean, it was a completely different kind of a value system than the one that Paul wanted to now introduce the Roman people to. Like God, that, that they're going to learn about. Okay, Samara is asking me a question about homosexuality. Is it a sin or not? So according to this, it's a sin. If you're a prac, if you're practicing. I don't make up what sin is and what it's not. The scripture does. Doesn't matter what I think. According to the scripture, that's what it is.
That's not what I thought I heard you say. I thought I heard you say, it's not, it's not how you feel, it's what you do.
Well, it is, right, right. It's the, it, it's the act. Right, it's the act of not what you feel, it's what you act on.
So you, if you have an inordinate, inordinate affection towards the same sex.
Yeah.
Is that?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think it's a question of what you do, what you think.
Sexual act itself.
That's what's, that's what's, that's what God is condemning. God's condemning the act. If you read through, for instance, if you read through, um, Leviticus, where it talks about appropriate sexual behaviors, you know, who you can have sex with, it's only in the commission of the act that you wind up in trouble.
But Yeshua condemns.
Well, yeah, well, see, see, well, Yeshua is going after something else there. You know, he's going after intention, after intent, because he, again, what Yeshua is saying is he puts, he puts a fence around the Torah. See, so he says, if you look at somebody with lust, then it's like you committed a sin. All right, but that's not what the Torah says. So, uh, see, this is why, why we have to learn to understand, to think biblically. Think biblically. In the Bible, Yeshua knows what the Torah says. He wrote it. Okay, so if he said, if, if he wanted us, if he wanted the Israelites not to even think about it, he would have put it in there. Instead, what he says, later on, he builds a fence around the Torah, just like all the rabbis ever do. All rabbis do that. Here's the, here's the commandment. I don't want you to break that commandment, so let me build a fence around it so you can't even get near the fence. This way you won't break it. And that's exactly what Yeshua did. He did that a lot in the Sermon on the Mount. Okay? So now he's our rabbi, so we're gonna try to do that. But listen, the minute you have complete control of your mental state, you let me know because I need some help.
So do all of us.
Yeah.
It's just the fact that we are looking at sin in a different context when we start listening to the teacher, Yeshua.
Yeah.
The rabbi.
Yeah.
You know, he teaches us the nature of sin, not just the act.
Well, right, so.
I can be a murderer in my heart and never kill a soul.
Okay, so let's take this another, let's, let's take it through another one of his teachings, okay? He says, so he says, um, you've heard it said, "You shall not murder." "But I say, do not be angry with your brother." Now, he's building a fence here. Ain't nobody, even him, didn't get angry once in a while. Okay? Later on in the scripture, Paul talks about, he says, "Listen, don't let the, you know, be angry, but sin not." Don't let the sun go down on your anger. Which one is it? I'm not supposed to sin, uh, get angry at all? Or?
We can't sin.
Okay, but Yeshua said, "I, but I say, don't be angry." So he's saying it's a sin, you know, get angry at people. And you, you see, you understand what I'm saying? He's building a fence around the commandment so that we don't get to do the bad thing. He doesn't even want us to get there. So he builds a fence around it. But we have to be, you know, we have to understand where the fence is and where the actual of, of fence, offense. Right, that's, that's, that's right, where the offense, yeah.
A couple of weeks ago, I think that it's incumbent on all of us to take the time and make the effort to educate ourselves about really the context in which Yeshua lived. And especially for a lot of us, I know that I've had to do this in my life, that grew up in a Christian paradigm. It's very, it's a totally different way of thinking and approaching scripture. And the new covenant, like the, 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 the gospels and readings that we're reading now were totally different when you go back and reexamine them with a different eye. And I think that there has to be more of an openness to reconsidering certain things that we're easily scheme fed in Christianity. And so you'll like triple that same thing over and over again in many, many situations until you can loosen that.
One of the things that you have to, you know, that I've trained myself over these many years is that I look, I do, uh, I try to look at the scriptures through the lens of Jewish thought. Rather than the Christian thought that has, it's, it's a different way of thinking. It's a different way of thinking. I don't even say it's right or wrong thinking. I, I'm not, I'm making, I'm not making that judgment. I'm simply saying, if I believe that Yeshua was speaking to a Jewish community, he would have spoken to them in, in, in an idiom which would be comprehensible to them. Not one which was, you know, later interpreted by a completely different group of people and then su- superimposed upon him. Okay?
The people that Yeshua was speaking to were his own people at first, but they didn't really understand what he was speaking because he possibly was butting in with those that were supposed to know what he was saying, who didn't.
No, no, it's not that they didn't know what he was saying. I think they knew what he was saying precisely. They just didn't agree with him. They, in some, in some cases, they didn't, they didn't agree. Well, I mean, but in some cases, they didn't agree.
Like schools of thought at the time.
Yeah.
One of which Yeshua identified with and embodied more than the other. So there was a lot of disagreement.
Yeah, yeah, right. So it's, you know, it's, uh, so it's training your mind to think that way. That's why I, when I know when Yeshua is doing some of the things he's doing in the Sermon on the Mount, he's doing traditional Levitic stuff. Building fences. Building fences because he doesn't want people to get at, uh, get to the point. He wants them to build an attitude. You see, look, let's go back, you know, we were talking about abortion a few minutes ago. I'm one of these people who does not believe that you can legislate abortion away. All right, you could do anything you want. People will figure out a way. They have to go to another country, they will do it. If they're committed to doing what they want to do, they'll go somewhere and get it. What I want to do is get at their soul so that they won't even think about doing it. This is what Yeshua is trying to do. He, he wants us, look, when he think, when he's saying, "Look, I don't want you to get angry," he knows that people get angry. He's not, yeah, he knows, you, you know. Uh, what he wants to do is for them to curtail that anger, to recognize what anger is and to, and, and control it. That if you allow anger, because he, he takes us on this little journey. Well, if you're angry, then anger becomes resentment. If you don't deal with it, and resentment becomes malice. And then malice can, can, can create murder, you know, so he, he takes. Yeah, well, and again, with them, you know, they, you know, they have, you have to understand when they're arguing, arguing holistically, in other words, that they're having a dispute over what you should, the way you should do something. You know, he, Yeshua heals on the Sabbath, and they're saying, "No, no, you shouldn't heal on the Sabbath." Uh, well, that's because they interpret the laws of Shabbat a little differently than he did. Okay, so they have a dispute. We listen to Yeshua. He's our rabbi, you know? I'm not, Hillel's not my rabbi. You know, I mean, Shema Yehudah wasn't my rabbi. You know? Okay. Where are we? Hold, hold, one, all right, we have 20 minutes because we do have to be timed here.
We're still in chapter one.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, well, we've covered this. The point, let, let's wrap up this point. The point is that in, by the end of the book, uh, end of chapter one, Paul has created, uh, um, an argument that the Gentile world is condemned by Allah. Because this is the world that they have created. And this, this create, this creation of theirs is an abomination to God. Mostly, uh, most particularly because God is denied in it altogether. By create, by denying God and the image of God in themselves, they've created another image. An image that looks like the beasts and the birds and all this other stuff that they, they've done. And they, you know, and, and they perverted all of these other, these other ideas of power, of what I say, power, money, sex, these things. They've perverted those ideas because they don't mean anything, because they're not in the image of God. Okay? So what are we gonna do about it? So this, so this is, you know, something Paul said at the very beginning, I think it was in verse, um, uh, verse 15, he says, "So for my part, I'm eager to preach the gospel to you also in Rome." Remember, I told you that he didn't know the Romans, he didn't establish the congregation, and his gospel had never been preached there. You know, I'm sure he's sort of aware of, you know, what kind of teachings these people may have had, but he wants to put his stamp on these people. And so he's given them this philosophy, if you will. So here's the first part of this philosophy. The pagan world is condemned by God. Okay? So when we enter chapter two, which notes I, I gave for those people, yeah, begins, uh, saying, "Therefore you have no excuse, every one of you who passes judgment, for in that which you judge..." For in that which you judge, you judge another, you condemn yourself. For you who judge, for you who judge, practice the same things. And we know that the judgment of God rightly falls upon those who practice such things. But do you suppose this, oh man, when you pass judgment on those who practice such things and do the same yourself, that you'll escape the judgment of God?" So, right away, he raises a question. An interesting question, I think, because now I gotta get into rhetoric, you know, rhetorical technique here. Sorry. In the next couple of chapters, Paul is gonna do something which one person describes as speech in character. And what he does is, in each case, he sets up an imaginary interlocutor. Somebody he's talking to, in general. He's not talking to anybody specific. He creates this generalized individual and speaks to that person. Okay, as if they, you know, they're real. In an effort to get at ideas that he's trying to explain to these Roman people without directly accusing them of being the bad guy. Remember what I told you about in the introduction to the letter? He doesn't know these people. And so he wants to be really polite. He doesn't want to jump on their, on their case like he did, for instance, in Galatia. In Galatia, he just called them idiots, you know, for listening to somebody else. You know, with Philippi, he's very familiar with these people because he established the congregation, Ephesians as well. All these places, but Rome, he doesn't even know these people. I mean, he knows a few people, but he doesn't know everybody and he doesn't know the community at large. And so he's being very polite, and so he does this technique in which he sets up this, you know, this imaginary individual, so he's not speaking directly to them, although that's what he really wants to be doing. He's very politic in this sense. So you have to understand this little rhetorical technique. So he's not accusing them directly. He's setting up some guy or some individual who, you know, "Hey, you're a hypocrite." You know, "You have no excuse, anyone who passes judgment on another, because you know what? You're doing the same thing. If you think that by, just because you believe in Yeshua, you're, you got that get out of jail free card, and yet you judge all these other people." And we've all seen this in action. You know, you're not getting away with anything. Okay? So, so is God justified in bringing his wrath on an unrepentant and disobedient world? And for me, this raises the issue of authority and autonomy. These two issues of authority and autonomy. Is man a totally autonomous creature capable all by himself, by means of his own power, to provide for and sustain his existence? Or are we, as a species, more to the point, as part of the created order, dependent on a higher power? See, now, for us, you know, we all, you know, we're all believers in Messiah, we're all believers in God. We're gonna subscribe to the second point, but this is the point he's trying to bring up. So the answer Paul offers, and indeed is the theme of scripture, is that there is only one God to whom the whole cosmos owes its existence. The whole cosmos. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. So therefore, God has created, has the right to demand a standard of behavior from his creation. God has the right. In other words, this is what Paul wants to establish for them. God has the right to judge the pagan world. Why? Because he created it. And in fact, it's interesting, we're gonna get into it a little bit later, we get there, I don't know if we will today. God made, you know, Adam and Eve are the mother and father of the whole human race, not just Jews. Everyone?
Yeah. Isn't he also saying that the Jews and the Gentiles are equally as guilty than?
Well, he'll come to that conclusion. He's gonna come to that conclusion after chapter three.
Right, he makes the article.
Because, because here, in this interlocutor, is a Gentile. Okay? This person who we speak to in chapter two is a Gentile.
Right.
All right? In chapter three, I think it's chapter three, he starts talking to a Jewish guy. Okay? Maybe, maybe there's a point in chapter two. Okay, maybe I'm wrong. Hold on a second, let me just make sure. Oh, yeah, right, 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 17, right, 217, you're right. Okay. I'm confused here. All right. So first, we understand that God is justified in judging because he's the creator of all things. So as part of the, and he determines that it's part of the human condition that we rebel against this authority. Right? We talked about the very first sin. The first sin was the rejection of God himself. Right? But as we know, let's talk about, I want to talk about, it's always important to go back to the Garden of Eden. So, in the garden, God sets up this, you know, idyllic situation. And what human beings do is determine that they can live an independent existence from, apart from God. Essentially, that's what happens. By saying, "Listen, we can be like God," by eating from the fruit. They say that what God has provided for them is insufficient, and that they can provide for themselves in doing so. So this act of rebellion, though, it didn't work out very well. Ultimately, every relationship which God established at the beginning is destroyed. God, the relationship between man and God, the relationship between man and the woman, the relationship between man and himself. Remember? You know, Adam, where are you? Well, I'm hiding because I was naked and I was afraid. You know, dude, 15 minutes ago, you were naked and you were not ashamed. What was, what's the problem? You know, something happened to human self-image at that, at the moment of sin. And that has really corrupted the way in which mankind has seen the world, seen himself, seen reality. So, you'll see there, I have some notes on Dark Matter and Return of the Phoenix. That was all, I've already explained that, the whole idea about dark matter and how the world would just be lost if God were to decide to leave. So the suggestion, what I'm suggesting there is that if God did not make sure that, you know, dark matter was precisely at the right amount, by the way, here. Let me just read this, this little note from Georges Lemaître. It says, "He introduced the term phoenix universe to describe an oscillatory cosmology with alternating periods of gravitational collapse and expansion." In other words, an oscillating universe, a universe which collapses and then explodes again. This is one explanation of what happens in the universe, that for eons upon eons, you know, the universe collapses and then they have a big, it compresses, big bang and explodes and expands until it sucks back in. It's like that, okay? Okay, there's no, there's no evidence for this. This is just the theory. This model is ruled out observationally because it requires a supercritical mass density and cannot accommodate dark energy, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, the really important part of this is that in order for the universe to stay as it is, requires all this matter that exists in the world, this dark matter. Because before they could detect dark matter, they, they didn't know that the universe had enough mass to hold together. That eventually it would all be sucked in, okay? But now they know about dark matter, at least they think they know. They've never seen it, they've never detected it, but they, they postulate that it exists, right? And what this conclusion here in this paper said was that survival depends crucially on dark energy and suggests the reason why its density is small. In other words, if there weren't the precise amount of mass in the universe, it would all suck together. That God creates precisely the right amount in order to keep the universe whole, rather than, rather than falling apart or sucking back into one little tiny black hole. Well, they won't admit it's God, what they have, what cosmologists wind up doing is saying there's a scientific explanation for this, which they, just by naming it a scientific explanation, means that it couldn't be caused by God. Which is absurd. It's an absurdity on its face. You know, just because you know what this is made of, doesn't mean it isn't as remarkable as it was before you knew what it was made of. See, this is the problem. There's no sense of awe. There's no sense of appreciation or thanksgiving for what, you know, in other words, if I were one of these cosmologists and discovered something, what you need to say is, "Praise the Lord." You know, "That's wonderful. It's incredible, blah, blah." Just because God lets you see how it might be done. You know? So, anyway, the conclusion is this. Since God has the right to judge his creation, everyone is in the same boat as it relates to sin, and therefore, no one is in a position to judge another person. If we do, we'll be judged by the same standard that we apply to others. This is something Yeshua taught. Judge not, judge not that you be not judged, because by what measure you judge, you shall be judged. Well, it's popular, but it's not, in theory, but not in practice necessarily. Okay?
You were encouraging us when you were teaching on Philippians. You know, about judging someone else. Look in the mirror. And since you said that, whenever I've been tempted, it's like, look in the mirror and judge yourself.
All right, we got five minutes. Let's see how far we get in five minutes.
Okay.
There's maybe one more verse. "Or do you think lightly of the riches of his kindness and tolerance and patience, not knowing that the kindness of God is what leads you to repentance? Only through God's mercy can any of us hope for redemption. Everything begins with God's sovereign act of grace." This is Paul's, this is Paul's understanding. And by the way, this is a Jewish understanding. That it's because God loved us that he gave us the commandments. You know, it wasn't because we were worthy. If we read, look, where is it? There's a perfect example of this found in Exodus, which is also in our Haggadah, is when we do this on Pesach. I believe it comes, let me see, check this. I'm trying to find this thing. Man, always have a problem. Okay, okay, this. In the Haggadah, and I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to, you'll have to believe me, and I'll paraphrase. It's that God says he does not, he chose us not because we're the greatest of all people, but that we were the least of all things, of all people. That we were the least of all people. And so, yeah, it's, I can't remember what chapter it's from, somebody, I will have to look it up. But it's because we were the least of all people, not because we're the greatest. So it was a sovereign act of mercy on the part of God that began the whole thing, even with Abraham, his desire. Look, when you think about, when you think about this, in the beginning, God creates the human pair and he says, "I want to bless you." He blessed them, and he said, "Be fruitful, multiply, and fill the earth." Okay? And then we have sin, this whole sin thing in chapter three of the Book of Genesis. And you think things would change. But really, what happens when, after the flood, think about it, the world becomes really terrible, then after the flood, God selects Noah and his family, and the first thing God says to them is, what? What? "Be fruitful and multiply and fill the earth." In other words, God's desire did not change. He wanted, I wanted to bless it. God blessed him and said, "Be fruitful and multiply and fill the earth." So God wanted to bless them. Even after all that craziness and mischief, God, he wants to, he wants to bless his creation, right? And then when he gets to Abraham, he says, what does he say to him? "I'm gonna bless you." God's purposes for the blessing of his creation do not change based on human reaction to that, ever. And so even now, even after he's gone through this, this whole litany of horrible things that are, you know, a part of the human condition at this point, he says, "Do you think lightly of the riches of his kindness and tolerance and patience, not knowing is that it is the kindness of God that leads us to repentance?" So it's an act of grace on God's part, which will lead us to repent, to turn our hearts back to the Lord. God's kindness. And by the way, this is another thing that we can all learn about kindness. That kindness is a better way to get people to repent than being beaten them up.
Can you describe what, what the criteria is when he says that you are the least of them? That he didn't choose us because of our greatness, but because you were the least.
Well, he just says, "We're the least of all people." I mean, it was a small slave community. No, it wasn't just population. There were 600,000 men or something. It was because they were, and nobody. Yeah, right. Bottom and food chain, good way to describe it. Yeah, right.
So are you, are you making the margin with Moses or with Abraham? Was that yours? For me, it's Abraham, but.
Well, Moses has a different function. Yeah.
We were all Gentiles.
No, no. Yeah, when, when you're talking about the new covenant, you're talking about new covenant concepts, you really need to go back to Abraham, not Moses. There'll be times where we'll talk about Moses, but, but really, this is about, this is about Abraham because he's dealing with the world, okay? All right. So, all right, so Paul uses this thought to point out that all people are subject to the judgment of God and are in no position to point out, "I know those deficiencies." Instead, we all ought to be thankful for the grace and mercy of God, which should lead us to the desire for repentance. Okay? So that's where we're at. I'm gonna leave it there. We all need to desire repentance. Okay? I'll do around seven. Somebody, somebody looked it up.
Deuteronomy seven?
Deuteronomy seven, seven.
Okay, sweetie, thank you. Yeah, this is what it says. It says, "The Lord did not set his love on you nor choose you, because you were more in number than any of the people. For you were the fewest of all people. But because the Lord loved you and kept the oath which you swore to your forefathers, the Lord brought you out by a mighty hand and redeemed you from the house of slavery and from the hand of the pharaoh, King of Egypt. Know therefore that the Lord your God, he is God, the faithful God, who keeps his covenant and his loving kindness through a thousand generations with those who love him and keep his commandments." See, there you go. It's the faithfulness of God. That's how we started it, thinking about the faithfulness of God. And that's how we'll end it today. All right, friends.